The most sustainable city in the country. Most shocking local forgets. We tell you life now. Life is not about the facts. It's about the actions. Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the December 19th, 2012, meeting of the Orlando City Council. I usually say the regularly scheduled meeting, the Orlando City Council. However, this meeting is occurring on Wednesday rather than Monday of this week, and I want to thank my council for indulging me. I was an elector to the Electoral College and had the great honor of casting an electoral vote for President Barack Obama on Monday, and we needed to move the meeting. So, thank you. Okay, we're going to begin today's proceedings with an invocation offered today by Elder Christopher Bowlen, a First Baptist, uh, First Presbyterian Church, which I'm a member of, so, in downtown, just a few blocks from here. Elder Bowlen has been an ordained elder for seven years at First Pres. The church has been in our city for 136 years. First Pres is involved in many local outreach programs, including Heart of Mercy Church of the Nazarene, Central Florida Jobs Partnership, and is one of I Dignity's five founding churches. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led today by Commissioner Patty Sheehan, District Four. Would everyone please join me in standing?
If we could quiet our minds and quiet our hearts. Lord, as we come into this season of joy, we look out in our community and see those that are not joyous. We see unemployment, depression. We also see that they need your help. Lord, I thank you for this gift of this little baby Jesus, who grew up, died on a cross, and was resurrected. Lord, as we look out into the culture of today, let us remember to honor you daily. I want to lift up every servant in this space at this time, Lord, that we learn to work together in unison, in harmony. No Republican or Democrat, just Americans. As we look at this Christmas, I ask you to bless those that are here, bless the families of all. And in closing, Lord, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for us individually. You opened the door, and we can walk through. In Jesus Almighty's name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty of justice for all.
Thank you, Elder. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll and make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Linum.
Here.
Commissioner Ings.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
And officially, you call the meeting to order. Is there a motion? Let's take up the agenda review and City Council meeting minutes from the December 3rd. Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Linum. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'd like to begin today's proceedings with a moment of silence in honor of the 20 defenseless children ages six and seven, along with six of their teachers and school administrators who were murdered last Friday with the tragic shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. Thank you. As a parent, I can't imagine a more difficult or tragic situation, and people ask me, how is the city of Orlando responding? I know Orange County has taken one position. The chief and I have had numerous discussions about what the appropriate way to respond to something of this nature. Just as we had discussions after the downtown shooting several years ago, the response we took there was to continue to have the OFD and OPD trained together for responses of those types, and to make sure that we educated building owners, building tenants, and residents in the downtown on how to respond to such a situation. We've taken similar action already related to how we treat our schools in our downtown area, and I wanted to have Chief Rooney publicly report on City of Orlando and OPD's response.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. If I could just give you a little background on basically how we're staffed at schools now. Currently, we have five high schools within the city of Orlando. At each high school, we have two full-time school resource officers. Five high schools, two full-time school resource officers at each high school. We currently have eight middle school schools in the city of Orlando, and each middle school has a full-time, one full-time, school resource officer. On the elementary schools, currently there are 27 elementary schools, 27 elementary schools in the city of Orlando. We have seven officers assigned to those schools. So, in other words, one school resource officer leapfrogs, he or she may have three or four elementary schools that they're responsible for covering. And these school resource officers are very busy. They teach anywhere between four and six superkid classes a day. So, they're busy leapfrogging to each elementary school. So, this Monday, we already initiated after the weekend, of course, with everything going on, we decided to at least, at the very least, increase our patrol presence. So, in other words, when the officers are not responding to calls, the regular patrol officers, and they're finishing up on crash reports, or supplemental reports, or contacting victims, they're sitting in the parking lots of these elementary schools for increased presence. We're also, the motor officers, the traffic enforcement officers, are also going through, by the schools, through the parking lots, checking on the administration, the teachers and principals, and so forth. We also have our community service officers. They're non-sworn, but again, they're in a marked vehicle with City of Orlando markings on the cars. And our citizens on patrol as well, they're not sworn, but again, it's another presence in the parking lots of these elementary schools and so forth. And our mounted, we're asking our mounted, our horses to go through the parking lots, again, just to, I guess, ease some of the parents, administrators in schools. But that was pretty much short-term, let's be honest. The main goal here is, and our philosophy is going to be, technology and training, because we think that's the best avenue to really look at the elementary schools, and not just the elementary schools, all schools in general, and take a hard look at maybe making some recommendations in those two sections. So, effective immediately, we began to do the surveys at all the elementary schools. And what I mean by that is, we're checking everything from doors to access, to panic alarms, to check-in process, their security plan of action, which by the way, just so everyone knows, the school resource officer and the principal sits down every year, and they go over their security plan of action. And that may include either a stranger on campus or a natural disaster, what the game plan is. And they both sign it, they tweak it, and that's already being done, just as assurance. So, we're going to complete full security surveys at all the elementary schools. We're also, and we've done this in the past, the mayor already mentioned Gateway. I think one of the reasons we believe we responded so well to the Gateway situation was, we had already been trained. Several years ago, we did active shooting at Odyssey Middle School, and it was very good training. In fact, it was recognized throughout the country, and our same trainers trained that same lesson plan throughout the country. They were asked to go all over to conduct that training for other law enforcement personnel. Also, we're looking at developing some training for the schools, the administrators, the principals, and so forth, whether it be a videotape or just some training on how they can maybe better react. God forbid if something like that happened at their schools as well. You know, how to respond, where to hide, where to walk out, just the protocol, some suggestions there. And we talked about technology. I think we can do a little bit better of a job, maybe with some of the, I know in the high schools, we do a great job with video. We can be in the parking lot, and we can see what's going on in hallways and classrooms and so forth, but maybe we can improve on some of the other schools on the technology end. And you've voted on it, you've been here before, where we've actually gotten grants, where the door automatically locks when folks leave, and we're going to continue to look at grants on how we can improve security measures at schools as well. But it goes beyond the schools. And Gateway, again, very unfortunate situation, but afterwards, we had numerous businesses coming to us, office businesses. In fact, a little while ago, somebody from a legal firm asked if we still conduct that security site training, and of course, we do. So, from an educational point, technology and training, I really am very confident that we are securing the schools and we're ready, unfortunately, if it does occur. But more than that, I think this is more very practical and frugal, and also to provide a safer environment for our kids and so forth, administrators.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have a question or a comment? Thank you. Chief, are you going to introduce that other item?
I can, yes.
Want to go ahead and do that right now?
Oh, absolutely. Just when we think we're popular, probably the most popular, I guess, thing in this room today is the K-9 dog over there. Everybody loves the dog. But, you know, I am humbled, I am honored, and if you know me, you believe that, to be your chief of police, Orlando's chief of police, and the officers do great work day in and day out. And this is just a short synopsis of a great job, a very violent armed robbery, a very violent armed robbery that went down at Forever 21 back in November. And just note the time of day, right after Thanksgiving, of course, the stores stay open later, and this was a little after 1:00 in the morning, and I don't want to steal Sergeant Rich Ruth's thunder, but just great police work, teamwork, and thank goodness, we got some very violent suspects off the street. And with that, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Rich Ruth, who worked last night midnight shift with several of his officers here as well. And K-9 Hank Wong.
Welcome, Rich.
Hi, Mayor, how are you? Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. I have with me some members of OPD who were very instrumental in the apprehension of these suspects. I have Officer Ryan Clark, Officer Monica DeJesus, K-9 Officer Hank Wong, and his awesome partner, K-9 Smash. Basically, what happened was, about 1:00 in the morning, after a very busy Black Friday sales day, two suspects entered the back of the Forever 21 store in the area of I Drive and Oak Ridge. They entered with the assistance of one of their assistant managers, who previously had no criminal history, but was texting the two suspects on how to get inside. Approximately 20 minutes later, after a local lookout was broadcast, we're responsible for the northwest portion of the city, which includes Rosemont, Ivy Lane, Edgemore, those areas. Myself, Officer DeJesus, who's actually still in training, and her training officer, Officer Clark, we were in the area of Pine Hills and Silver Star Road when we saw the suspect vehicle heading north on Pine Hills Road at Silver Star. Simultaneously, magically, we both see the car at the same time. We get behind the vehicle, which is a vehicle you see here on the slides, and it's a Pontiac Grand Prix occupied by the two suspects who entered and brandished the firearms and got away with $57,000 worth of cash and receipts and checks. We attempted to try and stop the vehicle. As we approached Dardanelle on Silver Star heading eastbound, it failed to stop, and a vehicle pursuit ensued. We end up pursuing the vehicle through College Park, over to Edgewater, and into the city of Winter Park. After the vehicle crashed at Minnesota and Miles, one of the occupants, the passenger, was arrested at the vehicle, along with the cash and receipts. The driver fled on foot, and the three of us pursued him about one street over, lost sight of him, and awaited Officer Hank Wong to arrive. Officer Wong arrived and deployed his K-9 Smash, who tracked a few streets over and located the driver, who was apprehended with the assistance of Winter Park Police Department K-9. We were able to recover, I believe, all the cash that was reported missing. It was successful, and nobody was injured. No innocent civilians were injured in a very high-stress, very dangerous pursuit, and no officers were injured in the apprehension. This map here shows kind of where the robbery occurred and where it ended. It doesn't have the actual route of the pursuit. That map would take a while. Here we have a picture of Smash on the back of Officer Wong's car. And these are the three suspects who were arrested and charged in this robbery. The one on top is Mr. Darius Graddock. He's a frequent flyer with our justice system here locally. He's been involved in several shootings. He's been accused and charged with murder. Very violent history, lots of weapons violations. The second person down was the driver, Mr. Williams, 21-years-old, was charged in a murder in Kentucky back in 2008. He was convicted on related charges, but not of the murder. The third person down is Mr. Wendy Benjamin. He was the inside person that worked at Forever 21, that provided all the information. We did obtain one of the suspect's cell phones, which had all the texts from Mr. Benjamin to the suspects on how to enter, when to enter, and where all the money was. That's it. Have any questions?
Rich, fantastic job.
Thank you, sir.
It's nice to be able to highlight some work, please.
Thank you. We're going to have Smash come around so everybody can see him, he's kind of hidden back over here. Smash is a Belgian Malinois, and how long have you had him now, Hank? He's been with Hank since April of this year, and he's just a fantastic, fantastic partner.
Yeah, Smash knows that our city attorney generally carries dog treats in her purse. Was very interested in that. Ah. Okay, our second presentation is a, Alan Johnson is going to present a 25-Year Service Award.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Today, we recognize Ola Bisi Slade Cox for 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Orlando. With her today is her husband, Ernie Cox, who is currently enjoying his retirement after 25 years of service to the city of Orlando. Ernie? Ola Bisi began her employment with the city of Orlando in 1987 as a secretary to then Fire Chief, Chief Moran. In October 1991, Ola Bisi accepted the position of executive assistant for the Environmental Services Department, where she remained until September 2009, when she joined the Orlando Venues Project Office. What people don't know about Mrs. Cox, oh, Ola Bisi, I can't do that, is that she's a former dancer with a local company in Orlando, and still enjoys dancing, but does it so, does it now through Zumba and other fitness programs that the city currently provides to our employees. In addition, she enjoys traveling, especially going on cruises, and she's planning on spending Christmas in Notchereas, Jamaica. Other activities that she likes are butterfly and vegetable gardening, fishing, cooking, spending time with family, sightseeing, and practicing Buddhism for the world peace in their community. Over the last 25 years, Ola Bisi has gained impeccable knowledge of the infrastructure and what keeps the city running underground, where garbage goes, what happens when it flush, and how the city beautiful stays beautiful. She's witnessed the old Amway's construction and demolition, old city hall's implosion and construction of the new one. In October 20th, 2010, Ola Bisi was there for the opening of the Amway Center. She continues on the project with ongoing construction of the Dr. Phillips for the Foreign Arts Center and the Florida Citrus Bowl. Ola Bisi is most proud to have served the city of Orlando for so many years, and where she humbly and proudly tells visitors, "I built this city, yes, and with a little rock and roll." Ola Bisi?
Okay, I have a note from staff, and I'm going to be very nice to maybe some members of our audience. Mayor Dyer, we've been advised that there are residents in the audience today that may believe there is a public hearing for the Go-Kart Project at 522 Vanguard Street. The minutes for the MPB approving the PD are on the agenda today, but the actual PD ordinance and its respective two readings will occur in January or February of next year. The hearing that will afford residents the opportunity to comment on each of those states. The residents in question live in Tangelo Park adjacent to the city, and that's signed by our planning director. So, if you are here today and think that you're going to testify at a hearing related to, I don't know if that's Fun Spot or not, is that different go-kart?
That's a different go-kart.
Okay, different go-kart, park, track, whatever. There will be two readings of an ordinance in either January and/or February that there will be public notice of, and that will be the opportunity for public comment. So, if you want to stay and enjoy our council meeting today, you are certainly welcome to do that, but if you are here specifically for that item, it's only a consent agenda approving the minutes from the MPB meeting. Okay? Okay, well, there's a generous offer. I guess this gentleman is related to the go-kart track, and if you are here from Tangelo Park and would like to have some time with Mr.
Lochner.
Lochner, he is making himself available to you. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we will move into the mayor's update, and you know what, the meeting's been somewhat happy so far, other than the very beginning, so I want to continue that theme and wish Commissioner Ings a happy belated birthday. He turned 75 on, no. He celebrated a birthday on December 13th. I'm not sure which one it is, but it's our tradition to sing "Happy Birthday" on Commissioner's birthday, so if you would join me.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Ings. Happy birthday to you.
I'm 39-years-old.
Okay, it is somewhere between 39 and 75.
We'll be 75 by the time he's done with his commissioner comments.
Okay, on a more serious note, it is with deep respect and gratitude that I announce after many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Orlando and the city, Deputy Chief Sonya White is retiring, and I have appointed John Mina to be the new deputy chief. Most of you know and have worked with Captain Mina, so you know that he's an outstanding officer, a respected leader, an excellent representative of the city and OPD, and a great addition to Chief Rooney's command team. So, please join me in recognizing Chief White for her service and congratulating Deputy Chief Mina for his promotion. I want to take a moment and recognize the wellness champions from each of our city departments thanks to the commitment, your commitment to the health of our city employees. City of Orlando was selected by the Orlando Business Union as one of the top three Central Florida 2012 healthiest employers, so if you would all stand and be recognized, our wellness champions that are here today. We're going to have the healthiest and wellest and fittest city staff ever this next year. Thank you very much. Christmas is almost here, and I want to encourage everyone who has last-minute gifts to buy, like me, to visit our eight Main Street districts and downtown Orlando, which is home to many great shops and restaurants, spas, gyms, and small businesses, and continue to use our Buy Local Orlando program. Keeping with the holiday spirit, it's a special time as we continue to give of our time, talent, and treasures, and the city of Orlando and our community is known for its generosity during the holidays, and I want to encourage all of you to take an opportunity to connect with one of our local agencies and volunteer and lend some support. I will be out on Monday at Commissioner Stewart's Christian Service Center, serving lunch. He's given me that opportunity to volunteer for a couple hours, and I will be doing that. There are many creative ways to help. I'm proud that our team out at Lou Gardens has grown and donated about 1,500 pounds of fresh citrus and vegetables over the last five years to local food banks and homeless shelters, so special thanks to Robert Bowden and his staff for some innovative volunteering. I want to take time to show how Orlando Cares. Orlando Cares is a program in the city, and we have been approved for a $100,000 Cities of Service Impact Volunteering Grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies and the Rockefeller Foundation, and the city of Orlando was the only city in Florida to receive this grant. More than 700 adults have volunteered through Orlando Cares program. We are partners with Junior Achievement, the Early Learning Coalition, the Adult Literacy League, and 4-H. So, go to www OrlandoCares.net for more information and an opportunity to sign up and volunteer. All right, I think I know why we have so many people in attendance today. We are going to vote on funding 29 Mayor's Matching Grant projects today, and these grants require neighborhood associations, not-for-profit organizations, and schools to partner with community organizations and businesses in the city to offer programs that address neighborhood needs. And they're, these programs involve hundreds of volunteers, as we emphasize our volunteerism, and they impact the lives of thousands of residents, and I know that many of our partners are here today, and would you all please, if you're involved with a Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grant, please stand to be recognized today. Thank you. That's citizen service at work. And I want to mention two items, additional items on the consent agenda today, and that's Economic Development 3 and 11. We are approving two incentive packages that'll bring 60 new jobs and nearly $8 million in capital investment to our community. Iron Galaxy is a downtown video game development company and needs to expand its workforce through, in response to a new contract opportunity at its existing office. They create programs for gaming consoles, including Xbox 360 and PlayStation 3. We have a couple of those around my house, so I'm sure we have some of your games. Company currently has six employees in Orlando and plans to add 10 jobs at its downtown facility next year. Siemens Energy is contemplating opening a wind turbine training center that Siemens Energy is contemplating opening a wind turbine training center that will serve as the educational facility for trainees in North and South America. Project will create fifty jobs, paying an average wage of more than two-hundred percent above Orange County's average annual wage. The project would also train twenty-four-hundred people a year from North and South America, which has the additional impact on our local economy with the hotels and the restaurants that will service those. So I want to recognize Iron Galaxy President Dave Lang and Tom Carbone, Studio General Manager from Iron Galaxy, and from Siemens, Todd Worthingham, Regional Head of Finance, Wind Service Americas, and Steve Olson, Director of Real Estate and Facilities, who are all here with us today. Would you please stand and be recognized? Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to discuss items of importance from their individual commission districts, and also to comment on items from the consent agenda. We rotate the order in which we do that, and today we're gonna begin with District Four, Commissioner Patty Sheehan.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and I just have a couple of things on Item A four. I'd like to congratulate my Mayor's Neighborhood Matching Grant folks, Lake Davis Community Garden. We've been working on that for a long time and hope to see that happen quickly. And the Planning Department, there was a snafu with categorizing as public benefit use land, and it's slowing down this garden, so if there's any way we can move that process forward quickly so that they can enjoy the growing season, that would be great, because it looks like it's not gonna get through, it's not gonna get to us until March, and that's gonna take out a lot of the growing season. And again, it's not the community gardens people fault that we didn't do the proper zoning, so I think we need to do what we can to get that moving along as fast as possible. Also, like pine lock entry improvement, and that's really important to that. Neighborhood Mills Fifty banners, which are very popular too in our Main Street, Orange Tree Village lighting for safety, and the annual Kids Fringe Festival, which is a great part of our fringe. So those are all great projects that are happening in District Four or citywide. And the only thing on the agenda today, Mayor, is Item C eleven. I know it's in Commissioner Gray's district, but it's Commissioner Gray, Siemens Wind Renewable Training Facility with fifty jobs in District One, that's just amazing, plus the fact that it's new technology, so that's just a great thing that we're approving today, and just want to wish everybody happy holidays. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll move on to District Five. Commissioner Linum.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to congratulate you again on being one of the electors for President Obama, and being on that telephone call with him the other day as a mayor who is taking care of business in the United States. And of course, our sympathy regurgitated in Sandy Hook Elementary School, and as a clinical social worker all of my life, working with children, it was a very, very sad day, but every day I hear of a child dying or kill needlessly is painful to me. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, in case I forget it or whatever holiday you're celebrating over the season. Just be careful as you travel or if you're at home. A few announcements, I want to announce, I know on December twelfth, there was a God Day in the city of Orlando, and I actually got to meet some people regarding, I think it was shoes for, was it shoes for kids? I actually heard of that when I was in Equatoria, Guinea. I was with one of their representatives, who went there to give away thousands and thousands of pairs of shoes. So I went out and a witness welcomed them to the city and had them pray for our city and for our council. The other announcement is to congratulate our winners for the Neighborhood Matching Grants, and we had seventeen, I mean, seven District Five and Seven, combination of Five and Six, that's fourteen. Normally, I name them, but I didn't want to forget any. I have the list here, so, and I've done that before, but I just want to congratulate all of you and all the good things you do for the city and using those funds wisely. It's just a great time and a great opportunity to partner, all of us partnering together. So thank you so much, my Ebony Nutrition people and all the neighborhoods, thank you so much. The other is, we had a wonderful time. I know the chief is gone. The other night, I think it's the twenty-ninth year for the OPD, but it's my fourteenth year partnering with them for a Christmas party in Paramore, and let me tell you, that was some party, the food was better this year than last year. It was a great success, as usual, when we identify hundreds of kids who come in and pick up quality gifts for the holiday, and it's one of those things we do in the community with our safety departments and divisions. So I want to express my appreciation also to Kevin Williams, Officer Williams, and the many meetings he's gone to with Neighborhood Watch with Georgiana and I think it's Kia. Just every week, it seems like there's one, sometimes you just can't make all of them. But when we can't get neighborhoods organized on the homeowner or neighborhood piece, we go for the Neighborhood Watch. Crime is down in the city, and we'd like to keep it that way, but sometimes in some neighborhoods, it doesn't feel that way, so we really want you to work with us and watch out for your neighbors. Just a couple of days ago, or was it yesterday, Dean and I and Elizabeth drove over north Lake Man, looking through that neighborhood, talking with Commissioner Moore about the possibility of annexation and things that we can do. I want to express my appreciation to all the staff that helps us in so many different ways. And now to the agenda, I think I may have some other things for the agenda. We've just congratulated you on Agenda A four with the CWG Matching Grant, and on the active living part, I mentioned to Dean that I believe we ought to market the walking component of that route reducing our obesity for children and for seniors. Walking really is good for our heart rate, is bringing my obesity down, and my cholesterol and everything else that I had that was moving out of place is coming down now. So even though I've walked for thirty years, somehow the older I've gotten, the better that walking is. So maybe we can put some funds into marketing that a little better, because it's good for our community. And I believe on Agenda Item C three, I think the governor and I, and I told Brooke knows I was gonna get him back for this, but the governor and I were at the opening of that gaming component over at Creative Village at UCF, and that is a multi-billion dollar industry, so we're always happy when one of the gaming components need our help and we can partner, so congratulations on that. I think that's it. On the F three, I know Commissioner Ing's had some questions, but one of the things gonna come out of F three is my being able to do some things in Lake Line. I've just been told we will have some public input if the public responds, but either way, we've got some great things coming down the pike in twenty thirteen for Lake Line. Happy New Years to everyone, be safe, and we'll see you in twenty thirteen. God bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Six. Commissioner Ing's.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Years to everybody, in case I don't get an opportunity to see you when the New Year comes in and when the holidays swing around. But Mayor, I'd like to say in regards to your comments and Chief Rooney's comments about Newtown, Connecticut, I too am saddened by the tragic incident that took place, but my prayers go out to the families and the school members and the communities there in Connecticut and also the nation. But you know, since I've been elected and a part of this council in two thousand and six, every year I raise the issue of lack of police protection in our elementary schools. One officer for every four or five elementary schools really is not enough, and I heard the comments today, that's gonna be good, but we definitely need to find a long-term solution of providing a officer for every elementary school here in the city of Orlando. We have twenty-seven elementary schools, we have seven officers, and we need twenty more officers to fulfill that. We do have to protect our teachers, we do have to protect our students, and we do have to protect our community, and even with the guys having to go from one school to the other, it's just really not enough. And you know, I've been there, I'm retired from the Orlando Police Department as a police captain, and I had the school resource officers under me as well, and when I was in that position, I was still saying the same thing. And really, we need to get with the school board, and let's sit down and let's try to find a way to make this happen, because our schools do deserve the best. And then I'd also like to say on Item A four, congratulations to all the recipients of the Mayor's Matching Grants Program. You're doing a great job out there, and we really do appreciate you and what you're doing to help empower our community and especially our kids, because they do need to have those ways that are very productive so that they can go on and be champions in our communities and be leaders in our communities. So thank you so very much, and thank you, Marcia, and specifically Julie Tindall, because I know you've been working hard behind the scenes, in front of the scenes, to try to make this all happen, and thank you. And then Item C four, in regards to the municipal planning board meeting minutes, there are two items there. One is within the renaming of Touchstone Drive to Fun Spot Way, and it's huge, and this is a great tribute to an expanding business Fun Spot in the community that will lead to lots of fun, and thanks to John Eyre, the owner, and all of his supporters for their effort in this particular incident. Fun Spot Way is gonna be great for the community, it's gonna add some more vibrancy to North I Drive. And then the other issue is I do support the expansion of an indoor go-kart attraction and meeting room facility that will bring additional excitement and fun to the North I Drive area, thanks to Pablo Rosenberg, who's here today. Would you stand up, Pablo, so you can be recognized? Pablo is the owner. And then also Alejandro Pizzini, he is the Chief Operating Officer for the AMP Group, so would you stand and be recognized as well? Thank you very much. These are two businesses, and I would just say this concerning Pablo and Alejandro. I don't know if any of you ladies in here know anything about Perfume Land, but it's on International Drive, and they have a big booming business there, and some great perfumes and all of this kind of stuff. I mean, so it's just really good, and not only the perfumes, but they have electronics, so it's, 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 and Pablo has plenty of business cards. Also on the agenda is Item F one, and I do support this item, the Community Development Block Grant Agreement between the City of Orlando and the Village of Orlando in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I really support this particular effort in helping to keep the properties together. But then, you know, I do have a concern, because there seems to be a decline in some of the housing rehab, specifically in District Six, so I'd like to see a little bit more activity there, and I'm also waiting on Weldon Place. It was a housing rehab, and generally, we've had ribbon cuttings where the residents come in. Mayor, you've come out there and enjoyed those, and they enjoy seeing the mayor and the commissioner come out as they celebrate their new homes, their new renovated homes, and sometimes their new rebuilt homes, so I'm looking forward to more of that opportunity. And as I expressed in the agenda review, F three, I'm gonna be voting no on this issue, simply because I think more needed to go into making sure that our public participation was really in this particular process, and even some of it I wasn't aware of, but nevertheless. The last issue that I have is the Washington Shores Christmas Parade and Celebration that was held on Saturday, December fifteenth, and I'm pleased to announce that the Second Annual Washington Shores Community Christmas Parade and Celebration was held last Saturday, December fifteenth, was a huge success. Omega Claus, representing Omega Sapphire Fraternity, was there, and Santa Claus, we had lots of food, thanks to OPD and their kitchen for cooking the food for us. Thank you, Officer Joe Lundey. Ed, do we have any pictures? Not here? Thanks, Officer Leroy Alfred, Detective Jerome Keenan, Officer Seth James, they manned the kitchen and did all of the cooking, and CSO, Posiah Spidel, who was also on hand to help us out. The parade began at ten AM at Dr. James R. Smith Center and in it with the Job Fair and Celebration at Hankins Park. Reverend Reggie Scunyers and the Walkabout Ministry had a Stop the Killing, Save the Children rally there. We were looking forward to Mr. John Jordan, who was the third black police officer hired on the Orlando Police Department as our Grand Marshal. He served on the OPD from August nineteen fifty-two until November of nineteen fifty-eight, and he's currently ninety-two years old and still living here in Orlando, so we're gonna see and hear more about him. We're gonna bring him to four city councils, so he can be introduced, because he is a living legend. And we also had former Miss America for two thousand and four, Erica Dunlap, to participate in the parade, and many of the vendors that were there for the Job Fair included WellCare, Hands of Central Florida saw over eighty people there at the event, OUC, Orlando Police Department, Urban Trust Bank, Hope and Help Center of Central Florida, The Waffle House, Florida Kid Care, Global Networks, which is in the process of training young men and women on cable outlets, WOKB Radio, sixteen eighty AM, the Workforce of Central Florida also starred ninety-four point five radio. And then thanks to our Young Blacks in Action marching group for their participation, and also Carver Middle School, marching band, Kedrick Redding, the band director, and Jones High School marching band, Rufus Redding, the band director. Shepherd Vision Missionary provided toys for many of the children there at the park, and my sincere gratitude and appreciation go out to all of the elected officials that were there in support of the community, the City of Orlando Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Jerry Demings was on hand, local business owners, organizations, churches, pastors, and individuals who supported this event. And of course, without your participation, it would not have been a success, and I just would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to my aide Cynthia Wilson, aide Jackie Cockerham, Police Liaison Officer Tia Pruitt, Smith Center Manager Marlon Poty, and Hankins Park Manager Mike Pavelko, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District One. Commissioner Gray.
Perfect. I'd like to apologize, I'm coming off a bit of a cold, so I apologize for my tone. I have two items. The first, I'd like to recognize with sadness the passing of Jim Jamal. Jim was an environmental engineer, longtime businessman and citizen of Orlando, who developed quite an expertise in evaluating, remediating sinkholes in Central Florida. If you had a sinkhole problem in Central Florida, Jim was probably the guy you were going to see, but Jim lost his battle to leukemia. He wasn't not only a great engineer, but he was a very good mentor. He mentored his daughter, Lila Nardosi, who took over the firm, but there's other engineers that he mentored. So we'll miss Jim. For those that might be interested, services are tomorrow, eleven AM, at the St. Luke's Methodist Church on Roslyn. The second comment was, I'd like to echo what's already been said before, that's to our friends at Iron Galaxy, also at Siemens. Thank you very much for investing in our community. What we do here, we recognize is a small portion, but as they say, time, treasures, and talents, we very much appreciate you committing to our city, so thank you very much for doing that. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Two. Commissioner Ortiz.
That was a big exodus here.
It was me.
Commissioner Ing's scaring people away.
Hey, those were my people, so they heard me and they left.
A different note on the agenda. Item C four, District Two, I want to congratulate a new facility we're getting, Excellence Assistant Living at twenty-two sixty South Seminole Boulevard. As we revamp the district, we keep getting new businesses and good As we revamp the district, we keep getting new businesses and good vibrant businesses. On District 6, Commissioner Ains, I want to congratulate your friends, Mr. Pablo and Alejandro, they left, but on their development over there on 5220 Vanguard, I think it's going to be really good for your community, so congratulations on that. Item C6, the Castagnol business, the Castagnol family, I want to congratulate them on the approval of their variance at 98 South Seminole, also another good project for the Seminole Corridor. And on Item C11, I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Gray and Siemens Energy on the opening of the Wind Renewable Training Facility, as Commissioner Gray was saying, that is a great investment in our community and we're hoping to get the max out of it. It's too bad we don't have the chief here anymore because I want to congratulate and make sure that, but we have Deputy Chief Pigman. Congratulate Deputy Chief Mina, who was my partner back in the days, I'm not going to say what unit we're working, but he's a great gentleman, he's a great officer, and I think he's going to do great for the police department as a deputy chief. So, I wanted to congratulate him. I want to congratulate Captain Orlando Rolon, who was also promoted. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for that too. And Lieutenant Danny Chad and Sergeant Mike Faulkner, those guys, those were the new promotions, and very wise from our chief and deputy chiefs, those guys are excellent officers. And in closing, I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and other commissioners for the collaboration we had throughout the year, and I want to also thank my aide Anna Cruz and Officer Eddie Rosado, who's been an excellent officer. I want to thank our community, the community leaders, the neighborhood leaders, and the Seminole Business Partnership, and very importantly, I want to thank our staff because they're the real backbone of this institution. You guys do so much and so many times go unrecognized. I want to thank you for everything you do. Thank you for the time you spend and for bearing with us, because I know that we can be a little difficult sometimes. So, this is a time to spend with the family and friends, and it's also a time when we have to meditate about how we can do better for ourselves and our families and our friends. So, take some time to think of what we can do better for the city, to maintain, to continue making our city the epicenter of the world, as I believe it is right now. And as President John F. Kennedy has said, it's not what your country can do for you, and this case would be, it's not what your city can do for you, it's what you can do for your city. So, on that note, I just want to make sure that everybody's safe during this Christmas, and I hope you have a very happy new year, and we will see you next year.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll move to District 3, Commissioner Stewart.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Ortiz, I echo the same comments, I appreciate that, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays during this time. It is a time for family, it's time for us to remember those things are important to us. Also, I want to mention, I know that Mayor and I have talked about it, the passing of one of our great leaders in our community, Bill Coleman. Bill had served on the Mayor's Veterans Committee, I think, as well as served in the cops program in the OPD, so he's a great Orlando volunteer, but he also jumped into Normandy on June 6, 1944, and has a wonderful story, had a wonderful story of his life and his commitment to our community. He served as a representative, representing us, and all of us have seen him often, but he will be sorely missed because of his ability to lead and his ability to understand what's important in our community. So, our thoughts and prayers go with his family. Tomorrow, there'll be a great side service over at Greenwood, I think, at 11 o'clock, and they'll be doing a reception over at University Club. For those details, you can get onto the Kerryhan Colonial website and get the information from there. Let me also mention some congratulations as well, too. We have a new incoming North Patrol Commander, Captain Isaiah White, thrilled to have him there, and then thanks to Captain Anzweida, who's moved on to the Drug Unit, and of course, the others, congratulations. It seems I was teasing Chief Rooney that all those guys are coming through North Patrol, so I'm doing a pretty good job training them, I thought. I appreciate you letting me train them. No, we have great people and thrilled with that. Sergeant Ogborne is now lieutenant, and Captain Rolon is great, and then of course, Captain Mina now become chief. So, that's, we've got good people in OPD, and it's good to see them moving up the ranks and continuing to serve our community. Three things on the agenda I'd just like to mention briefly. We've talked about the Mayor's Matching Grant, let me share two of those with us in District 3, the Audubon Park Covenant Church, doing a little bit of artwork over there, art project, this is great, and the Princeton Elementary, be doing two over there, doing a project there too, so thrilled about that. And Mayor, that's just one of those, I think it's a continued commitment that you've made to the community that allows these small organizations to really leverage their support to be able to accomplish the great things and build community, and I think it's something we continue, need to continue for as long as we can. Congratulations to Cabinry Creations over on Brookhaven. Do I see them here? Are they here today? I don't. They're doing a facade grant out of District 3, our second one this year, and as a reminder to our staff to just get our policies back in line and kind of begin to move that forward. I've already gone through two of mine, my entire amount, and just two of these so far, so let's keep that moving forward and making sure that our policies are consistent with our actions. And then last but not least, it's a long time coming, nobody's had a chance to mention it yet, but we have a new agreement with Princeton Elementary and Orange County Schools and the Orange County and the City of Orlando, Princeton and College Park Community Center. This has been a wonderful partnership over the years, got a little bit rocky for a while, and then we've got it straightened back up again, but it's really good to see these two groups work together, and I've been thrilled to work with Nancy Robinson, and it's been great to see our staff working with the staff over at Princeton Elementary. It's a chance for us to be able to use our building for their instructional during the day, and then over the summer program, use their building for our summer program. So, it's just a wonderful partnership back and forth, and I think that we ought to do that more often, and would love to see that happen more and more. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, we are going to be deferring Item B3, that was already taken off the consent agenda, but I just want to be clear on that related to a uniform contract that we're going to piggyback on Osceola County, but we're going to redo that. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. I will give everybody that just had an item on the consent agenda approved an opportunity to retire to the rotunda for cookies and Kool-Aid.
Eggnog.
Eggnog, okay. I haven't been to an event yet that has had eggnog at it this year. Anybody?
No, not yet.
What about coquito? Coquito?
Okay, so we will, without objection, recess the city council meeting. I'll convene the CRA meeting for the purpose of accepting meeting minutes from the CRA Board Meeting of October 22nd. Is there a motion to...
It's moved, approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We will adjourn the CRA meeting, we will convene the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Director Meeting, and the first item business is adopting an amendment to the bylaws of the downtown south Neighborhood Improvement District that relates to making sure that their bylaws are consistent with the changes in our procurement policies that we have made. Is there a motion to adopt those amendments?
Some of them.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next item is accepting minutes from the November 14, 2012 Advisory Council Meeting. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
Some of them.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And number three, accepting minutes from the November 27, 2012 meeting.
Some of them.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Well, without objection, adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting. We will reconvene the Orlando City Council meeting. That brings us to hearings, ordinances on second reading, number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of State Road 528, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, east of South Goldenrod Road, and west of Narcisse Road comprised of 1.79 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map and designating the property as industrial commercial district within the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to adopt, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of Hibiscus Road, south of Oleander Drive, east of North Seminole Boulevard, and west of Willow Wild Place comprised of .285 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use map and designating the property as R1A/AN district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Show move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida granting a petition to dissolve the Mills Park Community Development District as requested by the district's Board of Supervisors, repealing City Ordinance Number 0709171002 that originally established the Mills Park Community Development District generally located at the northwest corner of Mills Avenue and Virginia Drive, providing for the dissolution of the Mills Park Community Development District, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So, move, second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. All right, ordinances on first read, number one, that looks like a long one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the City of Orlando, Florida certain real property generally located north of State Road 528, south of Lee Vista Boulevard, and west of Narcisse Road, and addressed as 7252 Narcisse Road comprised of 1.08 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as industrial on the city's official future land use map and designating the property as industrial commercial district with the aircraft noise overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve, second. Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. That is all of our ordinances, so we have a quasi judicial hearing. QJ 2012 is 003, I'm going to call on Dean to give us an overview of this. All right, Dean Grandin, our City Planning Division Manager. We have a recommended order from the hearing officer, so Dean, could you give us the background on this quasi judicial?
Certainly, Mayor. Before we begin, I'd like to confirm that the appellant is here, and I believe, is it Regine Codet? Is he here?
Is anyone that is related to this case here today? Would you raise your hand?
Apparently not.
Okay, if they don't have enough interest to come, could you just describe the order for Dean?
Sure. If I could just go through the, I'll just go very quickly through the slides. This is a quasi judicial hearing, as you described, Mayor. This is for a variance case in Paramore, variance case number 2012, number 44, titled Eddie's Sports Bar and Grill. Properties in 221 South Paramore, the property is owned AC2 TPH and O1 TPH. This is all located in District 5. The applicant was requesting a variance for 853 feet to allow a restaurant selling liquor for on-premise consumption to be located within 147 feet from a church or school where a distance separation of 1,000 feet is required. I would note that there are five churches within that distance of this site, and this site has been the subject of other hearings in the past regarding the same type of variance On May 11th of this year, the applicant applied for variance to sell beer and wine on the site. On May 21st, a business tax receipt was issued for a 24-seat Eddie's Sports and Bar Grill, a restaurant, and on June of this year, June 7th, the business was cited by code enforcement for selling beer and wine within 1,000 feet of the church or school. This is the site in question. The other squares around the site show the locations of the churches nearby, somewhere as close as right next door. BZA held their hearing on June 26th of this year. They recommended denial of the variance request by a vote of four to one based on inability to meet the sixth criteria for granting a variance. The applicant filed the timely appeal of the BZA's recommendation of denial. The appeal hearing was heard on September 19th. Evidence was presented, testimony was provided, for and against by the city staff and the petitioner and other witnesses and interested parties, including those from the churches. The recommended order, the hearing officer recommended the City of Orlando City Council accept the planning staff report and BZA recommendation of denial of the variance request, and that's where you are this afternoon. You have three options to adopt the recommended order, adopt the recommended order with changes or direct staff to prepare a revised order. We're recommending that you adopt the recommended order. Counsel shall not change any findings of fact reached by the hearing officer without stating its reasons for such change. And lastly, if counsel directs staff to prepare a revised order, the revised order shall be transmitted to the parties and presented to the city council within 45 calendar days from today.
Commissioner Lyman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I was waiting to see whether you were going to call anybody else. My motion is for us to adopt the recommended order.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those... Okay, do we have any requests for...
We do not, Mayor.
All right, then everybody have a happy and safe holiday season, and we will see you back. I think it's the second Monday in January is our next council meeting, so I look forward to a prosperous new year. We're adjourned.